It's just three to one, but they're all one solo. Oswald got one.
Is the rally mantis working again?
The rally mantis is dead.
No, they got a new one.
They had a new one.
Yeah, they said it was a heavenly resurrection for a new rally mantis that appeared last night.
Of course it was.
What's the score?
Three to one, all three solo homers. Oh, Mondesi hit one. I don't think he can only button it.
It's been a while for Mondesi.
It's like we got him back.
That's coming back so far. At this time, I would like to appoint Jason Rabe as the Newland City Administrator. Put that out there for the council.
Is that like an H R A B E?
R A B E.
H R A B E.
Jason Rabe as your appointment.
Motion's been made by council and body that we accept Jason Rabe, the appointment of Jason Rabe as our city administrator, seconded by Councilman Miller. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next item on our, one other thing we have this evening. Jay, you have something you want to bring to the table?
Yes. Well, you make, you have made a choice for administrator now and that, I think that's exciting for the community. I think he's going to be facing a lot of challenges in the next few months and one of those is learning the electrical system we have here and, and as you know, there were, Ron is one of those people who had signed up for the voluntary retirement program. It doesn't extend beyond this year because you've ended the program. But in his case, I think the new administrator is going to need some support and advice from, from Ron to be able to help in the transition into the future. And I would like to ask the council to be willing to extend his voluntary retirement for up to one year. And of course, I believe the option open for him to retire anytime during that time under the circumstances that he already has in place. But I think the new administrator needs his advice and somebody to work with as he learns the system and gets some assistance in appointing a new director when Ron does retire. So I, I would suggest that the council give approval to extending Ron's voluntary retirement up to one year if he chooses.
It's been moved by Councilman McMillan that we extend Ron's four leaders' retirement up to one year if he chose, so chooses, seconded by Councilman Bravon. Any further discussion? No further discussion, those all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is adjournment.
Sub move.
That's the best one yet.
Moved by Councilman Gengler that we adjourn the meeting about a second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Ponceau. Any discussion? No further discussion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. We are adjourned. We'll now go into the, the workstation. Katie, do you have anything at this point?
Nope, I sure not, thank you.
Mr. Newton?
Just briefly to mention, I think the council is going to be working here shortly.
Oh, that's great.
So I hope the community enjoys seeing that. I think it'll be attractive. And then to remind you that on the 31st, we'll be getting bids for the refuse question and that will come to you on the next meeting.
Okay. Anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Did you notice the tracers reports in your back?
Yes.
This last time, anybody have any questions for that? Mandy and Jay's here, you can answer that, looks pretty good.
It is very good. You're setting very well for the new appointed year.
We're a very fortunate community to have the police that we have that watch over our money.
Yeah.
Along with the chief watches over our money. Next item is discussion items and for the mayor, council manager, former governor. And this is what we've been working with leadership Mitchell County. So you guys have the floor.
Uh, council members, I guess first of all, we just want to thank you for this opportunity to look at this issue in depth and provide you with our, our feedback from the task force. It certainly was a learning experience for us. Felt like we learned a lot by talking to the city, the citizens, the city administrator, city attorney, Mr. Devine and yourselves. We learned a lot about the current process and we feel that we've heard from enough people to provide you confidently, provide you with this recommendation that you have in front of you. What we found, almost unanimously, the city administrator should have more power was what we heard from you. The citizens seemed pretty clear that they were, didn't really see a need for the ward system, at least was our impression. And that was part of what, what's driving some of the recommendations. We do understand, you know, some of you did share interest in keeping the ward system and we, we explored that and, you know, we really did want to accommodate it. But I guess in the end, we just felt like it just made sense to kind of put it aside. The biggest thing that we were looking at is trying to devise a system, you know, within the election cycle process and how that would work if you had a ward system where some people were at large and some people weren't, how you could cycle that on and off. So we, we just really felt like in the end that maybe it wasn't worth it. Also, we were concerned with, with that kind of a concept, how the citizens would have the power to change the council if, you know, things started going awry, you know, and they wanted to vote people in and out and everything, that maybe that wouldn't be as feasible with that system. That was one thing that we were thinking about anyway. The main objective of this recommendation that we presented to you was to allow the council to be responsive when you needed to take action on important issues and, and again, to allow the people to have a seat in the process to allow for a strong government. One thing we do want to remind you of, which I think you're probably aware, is that if you do choose to take this to the ballot in November, the next meeting in September is when you would need to approve that, that move or that resolution.
Have a question. Yep?
Maybe you said this and I'm just not catching it, but the recommendation was five, a council commission or five councillors and a mayor.
Right.
And they're all elected at large. Would that be, all the candidates at the same time would be voted in if the top five vote getters get positions or would it be individual races for each individual chair?
Might, yeah, I might defer to Katie on that.
If, if this is the route that's decided ultimately that the, it's approved, we, we'd have a transition period, which would be a little bit interesting. But we would, we would work that in by charter ordinance as far as when term limits are up and, and all of that. Eventually, we'd get to the five and the proposal, and this is because this is what's typically done when there's five council members, is you take the top, there's three elected at each election. The top two serve for four years and the third serves for two years. So that's, that's the proposal. As to how that is, how do we transition to that, that's something that we would work through and I have not sat down and sort of penciled that in yet, but.
What would the duties of the mayor be in a council where the councillors have an argument?
Well, and that was discussed as well, if I, if I, if I may, because I would, yeah. The, the difference between, one of the biggest differences between mayor, council manager and just commission manager is that you have a mayor elected at large. If we just selected five commissioners and among the five, they appointed themselves, one of them was as a mayor, it, it really changes things dramatically from what we've been doing. So by keeping the mayor position, you know, we keep a lot of what, what we're used to. The mayor would not have a vote, but would sort of be elected at large so that your citizens have a say in who that person is. So that it's the citizens that are really deciding who's the face of their community rather than the five commissioners making that decision from year to year. The proposal is for that to be a two-year position for several reasons. One, you may get more interest.
The mayor has no vote, he has no powers, just a figure at position.
Runs the meeting, signs documents, yeah, yeah.
If, there could still be a situation due to somebody not being in attendance or an open seat of having a two-to-two vote, would the mayor in that case still have a tiebreaker for his vote?
Um, yes, he could do that.
So that case.
Similar like it is now.
Right, because right now we have seven technically and.
Whereas, whereas if you had.
Right, well, you know, I'm saying we only have seven filled seats.
Right.
Whereas if you had the commission, the mayor always votes every time on everything. Sort of like your county commission. Where the, so, I don't know if that'd be an interesting question, but that was discussed and as far as the difference is there, but I think the committee and the task force felt like that mayor position needed to be selected by the community at large and was, was an important thing for the community to select that person.
Well, and then also I think kept the numbers up too. Because we kind of explored just five and then within that five, they would elect a mayor, you know, the council would select who is the mayor at here.
Under this, you'd be going from nine to six rather than from nine to five, so. Yep, that's right.
Um, I guess the only thing I, I wanted to add was just that, you know, if we do take, or if you guys do want to take this to vote, we will work to help educate the public, you know, providing the pros and cons of what this new system is and just helping to explain it to the people when they need to go to vote better understand. So we'll, we'll be here to help through that process.
Could you expand a little bit upon the difference in the manager and administrator? Because I think that's going to be something the public may need to have a better understanding of what the difference here would be.
I'll be honest, I don't fully understand it myself, but I think.
I can answer. And Jay can, can comment on this as well. The biggest thing is personnel. Right now, the council and the mayor have the authority to appoint and hire department heads, chiefs of police. Your manager becomes the person in charge of personnel. The only person you appoint and hire is the city manager. That makes things a little cleaner because that is the one individual that your employees are, are to go to and those department heads, they're, you know, they, they work their way up rather than to go around perhaps to council members. And so that's probably the biggest thing. Finances, right now you have a, a cap, I think it's 5,000, that your city administrator is allowed to, to spend before things. For example, we had an asphalt bid tonight for 23,000. You wouldn't be voting on things like that. Now, we can specify all of these duties if you want, you know, if you want to set a dollar amount, we can, but, you know, routine things like that don't necessarily need to come for formal action. So that would be another piece of it. Jay, I mean, those are kind of.
Well, organizationally, you want to create accountability. Somebody, whoever is working for, I mean, the manager needs to be accountable to you and be responsible to you and carry out the duties that you define. In terms of, well, the, while the oil bid you had tonight, it, it has to be budgeted. You can't expend, exceed the budget for that, so there are certain items you would always bid, for example, vehicles, et cetera. But routine items, that may not be the case. Departments would be selected on qualifications and professionalism. It creates an organization where you basically have a chief executive officer trying to manage an organization that operates in the most professional level it can. And that's what you would demand from your city manager, that you manage in a professional way. And politics is not a part of who's appointed or who gets what. It's purely based on accountability for professional performance. Andrew, you have an idea?
All right. We'll go with this oil bid here tonight, okay? And of course, yes, it needs to be approved and that, that, and we got the city, a manager, of course, they don't need my sign off on it now. Is it too much to expect a manager to report to us at the meeting that he took this bid?
Oh, absolutely not. And in addition to that, it would be on, it would be approved by the council when you approve expenditures, but no, I think it would be, that's, you know, that's a major item. It's part of telling you what's happening where. And good for you to know that we're going to be crack selling streets and we are purchasing oil for that purpose.
I mean, that would be in his report.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's something we should expect in his report.
Well, sure, yeah, and you budgeted for it, you know, so he doesn't have authority to spend things that are not budgeted.
Andrew?
How would, obviously, we just offered a position to a city administrator and now we're talking about the possibility that in November, we would be replacing his position with a newly structured position. If we already had signed him to a, say, I'm just throwing it out there, he's on a contract for X as a city administrator, are we going to have to rewrite the contract from scratch and basically start over with a brand new contract at that time because we are changing?
He's well aware of the discussions.
He is aware, okay, that's the other question I was going to bring up.
I have some discussion with him about that and I think with the choice you've made, he's perfectly capable of stepping in and, and.
But would we have to restart or re-initiate a contract if we change the position like that?
If you, if you send this resolution, that's kind of the first step.
Right.
I would probably just ward his contract so that if, if he's changed to a manager, then.
He'll pretty cover.
You know, his title changes, we change his duties by, by charter ordinance, but.
But you won't know that until after November, right?
That's correct.
So he won't have a contract unless he doesn't come to work until December?
No, his contract would say if.
If or kind of thing?
If the, the position is changed to a manager, then his title becomes city manager. That's kind of my thought. I don't know that we need to, his contract is not going to have his duties very, I mean, his duties will be in there, but I don't plan on making it specific. Those are set, already set by our code and by charter ordinance, so I don't know that we need to contract around those.
No, I don't know.
So then is this vote going to be yes, no, or is it going to be yes, no, remain as it is?
It's, it's yes or no. And the, the question is, shall the city change to mayor and kind of three, three pieces to it? Mayor, council manager, so you're changing formats, you're changing the number and you're changing to them all being elected at large. That's all in one question. And to affirm that, then they would vote yes. If they don't want that changed, then they would vote no. And it would just be a, you know, which, if the yes, we have more yeses, then that's when we start our charter ordinances and we make that change so that at the next election we begin to transition.
So there are two votes actually going to have, we as a council have to approve this to go into ballot.
The resolution is, is the first step.
Resolution. And then the next vote would be the vote of the citizens to approve.
Correct.
That being said, I'm just going to put this out there. I, I, I fully support the, the at-large portion of what you're talking about with councillors, I fully support that at-large position with the mayor. What I don't support is an even number because I've survived a couple controversies in this town and, and it's come down to one vote and we could not get agreement. And there had, there had to be a decision one way or the other, win or lose, I don't care which side I'm on, there needs to be a decision. And for that reason, I oppose an even number governing body. That's why I don't like this proposal as it's presented, but I do like a number of changes. I don't like the even number, so that's why I'm going to oppose it.
I would prefer six council members and a mayor.
That would be an odd number.
That would be your odd, yes, that's what you're asking for, that's.
I could approve seven, I could approve five, I could, you know, I, I could change.
Paul's a wonderful guy.
I don't like the even number.
Wonderful guy.
But if.
He needs to have his neck out on the line, the mayor needs to have their neck out on the line once in a while to be this tiebreaker.
Well, he has.
And he has, he has. And I think that's part of the, to me, that's part of that position.
And why run just to be bully party? I mean, you're, you're just the doll that's going to be out there.
Wouldn't it be ten?
I don't know, the barbie's the most precarious.
More of the can.
I guess I, I, I'm thinking though, with five, it's going to be an odd number on most votes because the only vote again is on a tiebreaker and the only time you would have a tiebreaker is if somebody abstained or somebody wasn't present or a seat was empty.
But as it purports, then that tiebreaker is the mayor.
Right, and it would still be.
In the commission, it would be one of us.
It wouldn't be a commission, it would be a mayor, council manager. There'd still be a council of five, the council of five would vote, there'd be a three-to-two vote if it was all five present, if that case, there would not be a tie unless someone abstained or was missing or absent. And in that case, the mayor would be the tiebreaker still, is what.
Right, I mean, and we've had, we have, we've had seven per, gosh, year and a half now. I mean, we've had that odd number and the, I don't know if that's come up that much, but five is pretty typical and I, that was one reason. And then, of course, you have the issue of interest, you know.
What do you run on as mayor? On prettier? I mean, really, I mean, if there's no. If no stance means anything because you have to vote, why, what do you run on? What, what's the point?
I might come in on that.
Tom, Tom's position right now.
Right now, how do you have a vote?
There's a vested interest in my opinion. I don't know, as though you have that vested interest if he doesn't, if he doesn't have the capability.
But he would still have a tiebreaker vote. If he still had it, it just would not come up as often as he's doing. He's also the spokesman for the community.
Willful absence, that's the only time his vote would come up in the ways presented because it's an odd number. And you, like this chair is thrown out of the room. Not going to happen.
I do think the mayor has an important role, whether.
Yes, yes.
In any case, not just in this system, but he, he is the, like as Katie mentioned, the face of the community, but also in conduct meetings, but you also sign, also sign all legal documents that come before the city, all ordinances, any bond issue, it's the mayor that signs. If a group industrial prospect comes for community, the administrator of church will be involved, heaven will be involved, but they want the mayor involved too.
It's funny, you know, from my perspective, you know, as the mayor, it's like, you know, yeah, there's been difficult votes that I have voted and it's been unpopular and the mayor does have skin in the game because the mayor, everywhere you'd go, whether it's in this town, other town, you are the mayor and you are representing the city of Alloy. And when the people talk, hey, what's going on with Alloy, you know, your responsibility is to tell them all the good things and the positive things and the progressive things that we do, you know, and then on top of that, you know, run the meeting and, and I spend a fair amount of time, a few times a week stopping in, visiting with Jay. Last week, I spent 12 hours working down here with the people. So, yeah, there's a lot of times, you know, I don't get in the, the big decision making, but, you know, I'm, I'm as concerned about this community as anybody sitting around this table. And, you know, it's, because, you know, I want, I want to grow this community and I think any mayor would, you know, because we all want to go down the same path. And, and the mayor, yeah, sometimes I am the face of the community, but, you know, but it takes all of us to make it work. And, and I think it's good that the mayor will step forward and make the controversial tiebreaker because there's times it's definitely, it's uncomfortable, you know, because half,
half and half.
Instant and, and we've gone through that over the past few years, but I like, personally, I like the, you know, if we're going to change, I like the five, I like, like the, as presented proposed in here. That, that's my spot from the mayor, Steve. Is there a problem with what would be the problem with getting, I mean, we've, we've been doing this same way for how many years? You know? Yeah. I mean, I'm all in favor of change if it's going to help the community. I'm wondering is there going to, would there be a problem with getting Mr. Rabe on board? Getting things, let him get his feet wet for about a year and then coming back a year from November? I mean, LHC has been doing this study for what, three months? Seven months? Has it been out? Yeah. They had a meeting two weeks ago and you had, how many at your meeting?
Uh, I think there was about 30, 30, 40, somewhere in that range.
Okay. And how many of those were LHC personnel versus community? Graduals?
Yeah, I, I don't, maybe I would just.
I mean, I'm, I'm just asking, would it be a problem with letting Mr. Rabe come in, getting his feet wet for a year and then. I have to agree with you, yeah, let's, let's let him sit in the saddle a little bit here before. What you guys have done, but I would hate to come in and all of a sudden, boom, he's hired, we spring it, we spring this big change on him. Maybe it's not that big of a change, to me it is.
Going back to charter ordinance. Does a charter ordinance have to be voted on by the public also? But it takes a, a deal of time, doesn't it? I mean, you just can't vote on it one night and it takes effect.
There's a 60-day period.
Only 60 days?
Right, yeah, 60-day referendum period for that. Yeah, and just, I guess to comment on the waiting, and I think I put in there, if we don't do this at a November election, of course, we don't have spring elections anymore. So a special election gets expensive, so I would, and Mandy would.
And that's what I'm asking, I mean, I'm not asking.
But if you go to November 27th, that's our city election. So I think it's a little bit confusing maybe if we have a question on that election, but we're also.
Re-electing.
Electing under the old way, if that makes sense. We're.
Because you've got people running the old system.
And then asking about a new system.
Changing to the new system.
So that's why, you know, this is a good time.
Another point might be, you know, with the presidential election, I think hopefully you're going to have more voters there with more representation.
And then I say, but it's up to the public. If they don't want to change, they wrote it down, we continue like we are if they don't want to change.
And the public can, can petition, I know he's done that, but that's another way to do this, so.
Can I make a comment? I don't know how public a discussion this is supposed to be, but being at that meeting a couple of weeks ago that, that they hosted, the open forum, having been there and, you know, went back and listened to some of it and whatnot, I can't say that I agree that the general consensus of the people that were there was that all of the council's positions should become at large. I think there was a few people that suggested there should be a large members, there were some people that presented some counters to that. And I myself actually specifically kind of was, was taking that in and hearing it from both sides and suggested a mix of the two. A four, a six-person council with one representative from each ward because there was concerns expressed about, you know, specific wards not having representation and that this one, you know, may be more interested in their own areas to others, there were some counters presented to that. And sitting there listening to that, I kind of thought, well, what about a happy meeting? You've got a six-person council, four, one member from each ward and then two at-large members. And, you know, and I'm not sitting here trying to pound the stump for, hey, what about the idea that, I'm just saying that's what I kind of came up with after hearing kind of the mixed reaction about it. And just my, my overall point, I guess, is that I don't, I, I can't agree that the general consensus of even the majority of the people at that meeting was that they felt the best way to go was to open it up to completely an at-large council.
Thanks, Jen. But, you know, I, I'm kind of like Matt, I like either a five or a seven, you know, keep it somewhat. And I think, I think the wards, if you don't have wards, then people turn out and move. A lot of communities don't have wards. I don't think there's danger of, of one ward trying to, one group trying to take over the city. I think, you know, because you always have people that run for these positions that care about our community, not that they don't, but care about our community and want to move things forward, you know, and, you know, we don't have a big group in any ward we have right now, most of the time we'll have two people running at the most, so I, I don't think the, the ward thing is a real big tie-up. The thing I like about it, it's up to the public. It's a form the public gets to decide.
If the public decides, let's say the public votes against this, we can always revisit it with an alternate plan of, of a four-two or a five-one.
They decide on what we put on the ballot.
That's what I'm getting at is.
We haven't decided what we want on the ballot.
Okay, well, what I'm getting at is, let's say we agree next meeting to put this on. If the public says no in November, we can always re-suggest another plan in the future. It's not, it's not going to shut things down 100%. If, if the public, if there is a concern about the wards, which I have heard also people in my, you know, come up to me and say, you're getting rid of how we've always done this and the direct representation of the people. If enough people feel that way, they could vote it down in November and then we would re-present possibly with a six, you know, with a four-two split or a five-one split or something and moving forward. So, again, to your point, Tom, we're giving the people of the city, if we go forward with this, the ability to say yea or nay with this structure. If they don't like the structure, they have the choice to say no and we'll try something else.
Right. Kurt?
Tom, just addressing.